Welcome to the regular town council meeting, town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Monday, February 5th, 2024. The meeting is called Order. Roll call please.
Councilmember Ogerton, Councilmember Bunch.
Here.
Councilmember Elkema.
Here.
Councilmember McGuire.
Present.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Present.
Vice Mayor Roy.
Here.
Mayor Morris.
Here. We'll now have the pledge allegiance. I wonder if our sheriff's captain would lead us in the playoffs. There are a few public announcements. First one is we'd like to welcome Grady Miller, our new town manager. This is his first meeting. So Grady, is there anything you'd like to say?
Well, Mayor and Council. Mayor and Council, I'm not sure if this is on. There it is. Got to talk closer. I'm very delighted to be here with you tonight and to be your town manager. And I spent a full day working with the staff, trying to get acquainted with the organization. It was very productive. Also, to the residents who are here tonight, I'm sure over time I'll have an opportunity to work with you or help you or assist you with some of your matters or issues. But the bottom line is I'm very happy to be here and thank you very much for allowing me to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Grady, and welcome. And sitting in the back of the room is Carrie Direct. Carrie, just stand up. Carrie, this is her last week in town. She's, we have a week's worth of overlap here to ensure a smooth and dignified transition. So Carrie, we had a send off for her last week. It was a lot of fun. We had a good time. And so Carrie, thank you for your service again.
Thanks.
Another public announcement I'd like to make is we are, have another legislative section, session going. This time we have a bill called American Starters Home Act, which is another one that would absolutely gut zoning. And I think our legislature is in the name of affordable housing is turning us into New York City with dense, higher density, different homes. You can't regulate lot sizes. Your preempt ability to balance density relaxes regularly. You can't have setbacks. Lot coverage is no longer allowed. Prohibit screening walls and fences. It really is, in my view, a mess. We had this last year and looks like we're going to have to fight this again this year. I understand you have another public announcement?
Yeah, I knew, as did Councilman Ogerton and Sam Lewis. Whenever the county, the state government was in session, Sam always wore a Mickey Mouse watch, and there was a reason for that. Want to point out that there's one called SB, oh goodness, I didn't get, I think it's, oh, for crying out loud, I've printed it out, but I don't see the number. Oh, SB 1376, it's a Senate bill. And it has to do with, you know, this town is a lot of horses, a lot of horse people. One of the, one of the things that this one does is currently, when you're, when you're, you've got a load of feed, like you see folks with 12 or 14 bales of alfalfa in their trucks and hanging out. In the future, if this thing passes, you would have to cover those loads as you would have to cover the loads of the, of the squeezes that they bring to you. And you'd also have to, the truckers would have to cover the loads when they bring the semi trucks, flatbeds that are loaded up 15 feet high with, with bales of, bales of feed. It's just another example of people getting elected and thinking that they need to do something that they got their name on, whether right, wrong, or indifferent. So if you, if you got an issue with that, our state representative is Joseph Chaplik is one of them. The other one is Alex Culloden. Their emails are jchaplik and aculloden@azleg.gov. And our senator is Mr. John Kavanaugh, and he is J. Kavanaugh, and that's N A G H at azleg.gov. So if you want to voice your opposition to them getting yet more restrictive on our everyday freedoms, let them know about it. It's 1376.
Thank you. Are there any other public announcements?
Mayor Morris, this is Paul Elkema, and I have two things I'd like to mention here. First of all, I'd like to have an opportunity for the State Trust land discussion to come back on the agenda soon. So just to make that clear, that is clearly connected to our safe and vibrant community action item in our strategic plan. So I hope to see that soon. And then I have a second thing that has been, as you all know, an interest, and that is I'm intent on working with neighborhoods who may have an interest in forming heritage neighborhoods. I've had several phone calls about this. I don't know how that all would shake out, but I'd like to meet with people, have a discussion about it, see what they think, and I'll bring that back to council with a report, and you all can weigh in, and I look forward to those comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Anything else?
Just to mayor, with your indulgence, with a new manager and a new calendar year, can we possibly get the agenda sooner than when it's currently coming out? Because it's distributed on Wednesday, and it's usually a lot of material to go through. And if we're going to access the staff, it has to be done Thursday or Monday, the day of the meeting. The ordinance specifies six days, but it's not sure if it's calendar days or it's business days. But as somebody who works and commutes, I sure could use an advanced copy, and the public probably could too, before the Wednesday night or Thursday. It's a lot of material. It's a lot of reading, and then it's hard to access staff when you've got a very short time period. I mean, I think the calendars are put together weeks in advance, so a lot of people know what's coming. But for those of us waiting for the agenda, at least that's for me at least, I don't know until Wednesday night or Thursday. So I don't know what's practical, but I just wanted to make a new year, new managers' requests, that if you can help the working man, it would, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, I won't get into a lot of detail, but I'll work with the staff and try to see how we can make it quicker, and so it goes out, so you have more time for you and your counterparts.
Before I go to the call to the public, I just wanted, when we get down to the consent agenda, I'm going to ask for a motion to pull off the deed of gift from the Morning Star property for the trail easement. There's some confusion about what that is going on, so that will not be on, I'll presuming they have a favorable vote, which I expect. We won't be pulling that off. So if you have, you will know that when you, if you want to get up and speak on that particular issue, you know that it will not be decided tonight. It's going back for more staff work and to get the issues straightened out that were brought up tonight. Oh, call the public.
No, and we shouldn't speak.
Well, that speech for nothing.
Teresa.
Sorry for the confusion. I guess I didn't realize that. Bruce Arlen, Morning Star. Actually, it's a perfect timing, Morning Star Road, and we have Morning Star Properties. I would like to pose the question, what is the confusion? What's the, what's the confusion about this?
We can't answer questions on the, we can't discuss it from the council. You'll have to make your comments, and then we'll take it under advisement.
All right. Will you speak with the public about it, though, as opposed to simply a private affair? Can the public be part of that elucidation?
It will be back in the normal course of the business we've been using for years. If you're on Morning Star, then contact.
Yeah, I just found out about this gift, which has been pulled for some reason, interestingly. Why would it be pulled? It's interesting. Here it is on the agenda. Maybe there's an idea about being, about pulling it.
Well, I can assure you there's no conspiracy. It's pulled because there were questions about it, and people who had direct influence did not have brought new information. That's why I say pulled. There were no conspiracies going.
It's, I think I sound provocative, and I guess I am being a little provocative. He talked about early information, Tom Ogerton did. It all sort of winds together. Information flow, transparency, time to consume information, digest information, and have a adult dialogue in our town. So that's what I wanted to say. I'm a little upset that I just learned about this, and I'm happy it got pulled off. However, I hope these kinds of things can be untangled in the future, and that we could have these kinds of dialogues well in advance, if that's okay with you. I'd appreciate it. Okay, thanks.
That's all the call to public?
No others for call to public.
Okay, town manager report.
Thank you.
Melissa was wishing to speak on the consent agenda.
On the consent agenda?
On item one, which is this.
If you want to speak on the consent agenda, come to call the public here. Yeah.
But I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Melissa Wajeska, and I live at 42020 North Old Stage Road, right next to the property where this gifted deed easement is. Morning Star Road runs right through my property. It does a switchback right through my property, so it directly affects me. And I didn't know anything about this. So I'm quite upset. So the whole reason I moved to Cave Creek from Chandler is because I'm on the edge of town. I love the desert. I wanted to be out there. And from what I understand, there's going to be a development backup there. And this is just a little sneaky way, this trail, to get back to that development, which is going to put a busy road right through the back of my property. And I'm not okay with that. You need to be representing the people of Cave Creek, not the developers. I have more to say, but I'm too upset.
Thank you. Okay, town manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council. As council is probably aware, there's anticipated storm system coming into the area here. And we're anticipating that there will be some flooded roadways that our residents may experience. This will be primarily Tuesday through Wednesday. And so we want to remind residents, please do not attempt to cross flooded washes and find other ways to go around if they do see dangerously high waters through some of the wash areas. This information that I'm sharing with you tonight is also posted on our social media, and we'll update accordingly as the storm develops. Also wanted to remind the public and nonprofit organizations that our annual community grant application for the current fiscal year is now underway. And applications can be found on our website and is due by March 4th. And there's a number of information bytes on our website that explain how this process works. I also wanted to have Sean Cruz-Weisner, our utility director, come up and give a summary of the wastewater system emergency repair. All of you were probably aware of this. Could have been really disastrous. It was pretty bad, but we were able to, staff was able to get on that immediately, and as bad as it was, it could have been much worse. So with that, I'm going to have our utilities director, Mr. Cruz-Weisner, give you an update on this.
Thank you, manager. Mayor, council, and public. Obviously, we impacted a lot of people by the, what happened at Cave Creek Road and Carefree Highway, so we thought it was worth to give a quick briefing on what happened. So in summary, the eight-inch force main that takes all the flow from the Ranch Minion list station collapsed in the intersection. It collapsed into the receiving manhole. That meant that we actually had to vault and haul all the town's wastewater around the operation while we got contractors and do the emergency work. They're working there. Okay. What I would like to point out, actually, I went to, is that actually, while most people saw the event on Thursday, the 18th, it actually started on the 17th. And I have some staff here I'd like to acknowledge, because actually on the 17th, our staff, you actually have a dedicated staff that, that saw a problem and dealt with it before it actually occurred to prevent something from happening. It could have been a lot worse for this town. So the plant supervisor, Greg Fish, actually noticed that the plant flows looked odd that day. That evening, he actually went onto the town, skated a system to look at the plants, and he saw that something was significantly wrong. So at 10 o'clock, he actually came out to the site, brought Richard Canham to the site, and there, that's your wastewater team. They're actually here tonight, so I wanted to make sure they get acknowledged. They came after hours. They were actually looking at the system and saw the event happening and proceeded to get out there. And actually, before we actually had a catastrophe, we could have had a major issue here in the town, a major sanitary sewer overflow. You know, what would happen was bad enough, but the fact that the staff that we have dedicated to help this town actually made it something that was, while being bad, could have been a lot worse, as Grady indicated. So what we found, what Greg and Richard found is actually at the intersection, they first checked our lift stations, trying to figure out what was going on, then they came down to, we knew with the receiving manhole where the force main came into. They found that was full of debris. So they immediately got contractors involved, tried to clear that blockage. It was not working. It wasn't until the next day that we were actually able to get in to actually see what the problem was, but they were actually able that night to start the events where we started vaulting and hauling around the operation and actually started getting contractors that evening out. So that's all done by Greg Fish and Richard Canham. So again, especially Greg as a supervisor, so I want to make sure that they get acknowledged in all this exercise tonight, so.
Well, can I pause? Greg and Richard, would you stand up? Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you.
Yeah. Again, I can't say enough the dedicated staff that we have for this town. I feel so lucky running this division. So what happened? The force main basically deteriorated. It's actually a ductile iron pipe and effectively ate itself from inside out. So what you're seeing here is a couple of pieces of pipe. One's a fitting. One is a section of the pipe next to a full piece of plastic pipe. So again, it just ate itself away. When we talk about bypassing the lift station, this is what a bypass looks like. We actually have 20,000 gallon tankers. We had three of them there pumping into that tanks at the site, and we actually used tanker trucks to carry all the town's wastewater, 90% of the town's wastewater, around the blockage to the treatment plant. So that actually occurred all weekend long. We had another shutdown last week because we actually had to do some additional work. So we're actually decommissioning this stuff right now, but again, it was amazing what happened that night. So we were able to replace about 30 feet of the force main. The trench was difficult because the manhole, the receiving manhole is 18 feet deep. So we had to dig down to the bottom of that receiving manhole, and then the pipe itself, where we found it in a decent shape, was about seven feet deep. In the middle of the intersection, we kept finding pipes that weren't anticipating. So again, kudos to our contracting team. BNF Construction came out to help us out. We actually have an ongoing contract to do a lot of our town sewer maintenance. And they had a lot of other vendors that came out, Wolverine, SER tankage. So we had a lot of people who came to help the town during this event. And then after the, the patching was done, people might have noticed, we kept up the barricades a little bit longer. We tried to minimize the impact we could, but we actually had some issues with the receiving manhole and one just immediately downstream. So BNF contracting pulled their teams off another project for us to help get the work done. So we went into the, this is the receiving manhole where the force main comes into. You can see the night that I got there and looked at it, the debris was mostly gone, but that was effectively five feet full of granite, et cetera. So we actually had to get an operation down there. We shut the force main down so the contractor could get in and do some emergency repair work to that, the base of that manhole and the next one downstream. So the immediate event is over. So I'll say, you know, again, kudos to the staff for doing this. There's still work to be done. We still need to repair probably 20 to 30 feet of the force main that we couldn't get to through the intersection. So we're going to start working on different opportunities to get in there. Part of the problem is that where we left off, there's a fitting, just upstream of that, 20 feet down, there's another 45 degree fitting. So the pipe is not nearly as deteriorated as what we left it, but we still need to go in and finish that repair. And the manhole that we did the work in, that receives the force main, still needs, we actually have to go in and ship off the remaining coating, actually all the coating in that, and bring it all the way up. What we did was actually repair the base of the manhole, which we needed the force main to be off for them to do that safely. But they could do the rest of the repair while it's live, but that'll probably take four to five days. So we'll have to plan another shutdown of the intersection or blockage of the intersection. I don't want to say shutdown, but a blockage of that intersection to get that done. We're already looking at other ways to evaluate this. This force main is almost three miles long, eight-inch force main. It runs from Ranch Minjana down to the intersection. So we've already reached out to Black and Beach engineers who are starting to do a master plan, do some other projects with us, and they actually had a team that came out in last Friday with staff. We tried to gain entry to the force main while it was off to see if we can see some other areas. So they're going to give us a report back, and they're actually going to look at other opportunities, like inspection balls that you can put into the force main that might give us some information. We looked at doing things like plugs, pigs, but they won't work with the configuration of our force main. So that's where we're at right now. So again, the immediate event's over. We still have some additional work to do, but again, I give kudos to all the staff who worked on this, especially Greg and Richard. With that, I can answer any questions.
The cause.
The cause is, you know, sewer gases themselves inherently release H2S. H2S is an acidic gas. The pipe that was used to construct the force main is ductile iron pipe. It's, we believe it's a cement mortar lined. That's what we observed down at that end of it. The cement lining does not provide the protection needed for the gas, and then once the cement's gone, then the pipe itself gets eaten away. So effectively, we rotted the pipe from the inside out. That's why you see the blue pipe is plastic. Plastic is inert H2S gas. That's why the repair we did in plastic. So, so we'll have to look at other opportunities. We believe the worst case might be another 20 feet, but again, it's nowhere near as bad that we still need to get into the rehab, and we have to look at the rest of the line. A couple of spots that we have over the years, my tenure here at the town, we've cut into it. It's actually looked good shape. The liner's been intact, the pipe's been intact. So that's why I think it's really the, the, the bottom end of this where it's constantly exposed to the atmosphere. So it's not full. It's actually got air gaps in it, and the air gaps allow the H2S gas to eat the linings away.
This might be a good time to lobby for oil and, our oil and gas regulations.
I'd be gas, yeah. No, again, I'll give kudos to the staff. You know, Greg is watching. We have a odor control system at the Ranch Minjana lift station, so we try to manage that. The, one of the problems is that that pipeline is a little bit too large. It should have been slightly smaller, maybe six inch diameter. So the flow stays in there overnight. So every morning, we have a problem with odors at that intersection, because we were trying to figure out other ways to clean that out. But it's partly because you get a slug of wastewater. It sits in that line. It makes its way down. By the time it actually gets to the intersection in the morning, it's actually old wastewater, and it's starting to go septic on us. So it's a challenge to the system.
Thank you. Mayor, Sean, this is Paul Elkema. I, as you may know, I walk the town in the mornings for exercise, and as I was walking the other day, a lady came out of her driveway and said, "I don't know who fixed that problem," but she worked for Public Works in Flagstaff, and she said, "That project would have taken six or eight months of planning to get it taken care of the way our crew did." So I just wanted to share that with you. Awesome job. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Mayor. One last item I'd like to share with the council. As you're aware, we had a shooting incident that occurred at Walmart a little over a week ago. Tonight, we're going to have an update to you from Town Marshal Adam Stein and also MCSO Captain LaTerno. With that, I'll turn it over to Marshal Stein.
Thank you, town manager. Mayor, council, vice mayor members of council. In the 22 years I've been the marshal of Cave Creek, we have hiccups that occur on occasion. This could best be described as a hiccup. The way it was responded to by the sheriff's office, the way it was handled, the rapid resolution of it. I commend the sheriff's office, and I thank them for that. I'm going to let Captain LaTerno explain what happened.
Good evening, mayor and council. Hiccup is a good description of it. It, there was an incident at Fountain Hills Sunday, not this recent weekend, but last, the weekend before. Two individuals showed up at Walmart in two separate vehicles. There was an incident with one of the subjects inside the Walmart. A disagreement. He left angry. He went out to his vehicle, retrieved a handgun, and fired off two rounds in the direction of the store, not at any individual, just in the direction of the store. There were people in the neighbor, in the parking lot that witnessed this incident, and they watched that subject hand the gun to another male subject. That person got in his vehicle and left the area. A gentleman in the parking lot that witnessed this got in his vehicle and followed that vehicle that left the parking lot with the handgun. He got a license plate. And as he was following the vehicle and calling it in to the, to the sheriff's office, the driver of that vehicle with the handgun fired a round at him, at that vehicle. And so we had a license plate, and we started moving quickly. Patrol deputies arrived at the Walmart, talked to everybody that was a witness, got good information. We got the plate. We started working it very quickly. Monday morning, our general detectives downtown rolled out here. They started gathering the evidence. They rolled out that night and, and gathered the shell casings from the handgun that was used. They got very good information and follow up. I can't go into everything because it's still an active investigation, but the, the quick follow up in that license plate, we were able to gather information that that vehicle had been serviced. That plate had been serviced at Walmart. And, and we run the plate. We get information, but we actually got some very good information from Walmart, which also tied the second vehicle in, the guy that originally shot. So it all tied together. By Monday, we knew who we, who we were looking for. By Tuesday, we were out looking for them. We located the, the subject that fired the first round was picked up Monday, totally unrelated. He had a federal warrant, 18-year-old white male. The second subject, the vehicle that the citizen following got the plate, we picked him up also. We had him in custody by Wednesday. There was a little problem. He was over in Peoria. He barricaded up in a house. We got him. Our SWAT team got involved, and we got him out. There was also a third subject taken into custody that kind of interfered with the investigation, got involved, wrong place, wrong time. So we also took three into custody. So not related to the town of Cave Creek. As far as a hiccup, they came into town. They went to that, the Walmart in town, caused a ruckus, and with some very good police work and a little bit of luck, we were able to get them, everyone in custody by Wednesday of last week. I don't know if you have any questions, if, and if you do, I'll answer what I can.
Just out of curiosity, what was the federal warrant for him?
I don't know that. I honestly don't know that. I could tell that if I knew it. I'll look up and find out, and I'll, I'll let you know. All three subjects, 18 years old. Young, young. And yeah, good point. Not Cave Creek residents. None of, none of the three. Yeah, that is important. I should have mentioned that.
Stranger danger.
None of the three were Cave Creek residents.
As I would expect. Any other questions? Thank you. Quick work. Thank you very much. Thank you for letting us know.
Sure.
That answers a lot of questions.
I'll always let you know what I can.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's all for now. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda.
I have a question for the manager. I noticed Hal back here. I had a question. When do we plan on having tandem, the contract for tandem and tally ho to pave it, since that's been on the agenda since last summer?
I reached out to our consultants today. We have preliminary plans. We had preliminary plans. We returned them back to them for corrections. We are waiting for the corrections. And I reached out to them today to find out when those corrections would be arriving. I have not heard back yet.
So does the money have to be under contract or completely spent by June?
During the budgeting process, we will probably bid it and then try and carry over, rebudget it for 25, the money. But we have $260,000 in the budget for construction.
It would be nice to get that completed before we get into monsoon season.
I agree, and we are pushing our consultant to get us the design plans.
I mean, they're the last two streets that are, that are running up Black Mountain.
Yeah, so we do have, we are trying to get that accomplished.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. I move that item one on the consent agenda be pulled and referred back to staff. Looking for a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. The remainder of the consent agenda, does anybody wish to pull anything else off that agenda? Looking for a motion then to approve the consent agenda?
A motion here to improve the, approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. General agenda items, item one is.
Good question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have an idea when this item, the first item on the consent agenda will be heard? Will that be in two weeks?
Vice Mayor, I, that caught me off guard, so I, I'm not aware of when that will be, but I'll, I will research this and let the council know tomorrow as to when we anticipate. I would hope it's just more of an informational issue. But I was made aware of this just coming into the meeting that there might be some legal issues that might make it a little bit stickier. I may not be able to be back as soon as the next meeting, but we'll let you know one way or the other, when we can anticipate this coming back.
Good, because obviously there's, there's some anxiety regarding it and the sooner the better.
I, I understand. Thank you.
Item number one is council discussion approval of the resolution to mayor and town council of town of Cave Creek, Miracopa County, Arizona, calling the 2024 primary and general election and authorizing the town clerk to conduct the August 6th, 2024 primary election and November 5th, 2024 general election presented by the town clerk.
Yes, I'll go ahead and have the town clerk present a report on this item that's before you. Ms. Rosa.
Mayor Council, the resolution before you provides a courtesy notice to residents of the upcoming election to fill seats for mayor and council and calls for the alternative expenditure limitation, AKA home rule, to be placed on the ballot. We will have a public hearing for home rule on February 20th and on March 6th on that item. And I apologize, I believe verified March 4th, is Monday, March 4th. The resolution also asks for council direction to me as clerk on adding two additional items for voter consideration. The first item for voters to consider would be changing the mayor term length from two years or four years. The second items, item for voters to consider would be changing the council member term length from two years to four year stagger terms. If either or both of these items passed by voters, the four year terms will begin with the newly elected mayor and three of the newly elected council member terms in December 2024. For council members, the three elected officials with the highest votes would serve from 2024 to 2028. And the three with the lowest votes would be up for reelection in 2026. If the council directs me to move forward, we will bring forward two ordinances, one for the mayor term and one for the council member term for council consideration. Once adopted by council, the ordinances would be submitted to a popular vote. And that, that is it.
Okay. Questions of the town clerk?
Well.
Well, I'd like to have some discussion with you.
Well, we can after the motion. That's after, after the motion, ma'am. So does everybody understand then that this is, this is not the, this is just directing her to diva, the draft up the, i- if it fails, we wouldn't draft the agenda items, but if we do, then we have to notify the county of the election. And we have to, and we'll instructions to staff to prepare the the code. Yep.
I'm sorry to be involved. Can I ask another question of the attorney? For the clerk, uh, this is required routinely for us to have our elections this fall. Is that correct? This resolution?
Yes. Solidated elections are in the even years and in either the, the primary in August and the general in November.
It designates those dates for our usual election.
Yes, sir.
So this is a normal resolution.
Yeah, yeah.
Hello, Mayor Bob. Um, this is Paul again. Um, as I look at this, the first part of this, uh, agenda item looks like a regular sort of housekeeping piece. We're going to have elections and these are the dates. And I think that's pretty straightforward and, um, that works, but, um, I know that the people of Cave Creek are conscious of how our elections work and how long the people who get elected serve. And it seems like that's a sort of separate issue and of, uh, reasonable importance to sort of, to stand alone. So I, I'd like to have us consider, uh, doing the housekeeping part and pulling off sections, uh, seven and eight where it describes exactly, uh, in, in the form of a resolution. Uh, what is being proposed here about changing the, um, the, the length of, uh, you know, our service as volunteers and, um, and exactly how all that works. I, I think there needs to be some public discussion about that. Thank you.
Well, we're not inhibiting public discussion. What's happening is, um, if, if, if anyone on council wants to make a motion to pull that portion, which is the four year terms off, all you have to do is make a motion and then the other thing stands on their own. We can have full discussion of it. Uh, well, right now, as far as whether to, all we're doing is telling them proceed to bring the code back to his council. There is another, then we'd have to approve something that would go before the electorate. But, um, in the interest of time, I, I think this is, this is a, a very efficient way to do it. And we're going to get the same result. We can discuss this all that people want. Um, we can, uh, if, uh, if it's something the council does not wish to do, we make a motion to pull it off there. Second it, vote on it. The democratic process has ruled once again.
I'll pick up on your offer. I'd like to make a motion that we take the routine language and eliminate paragraph seven and eight.
Well, we, we have public comment first, Tom.
You did that for a motion, sir?
No, I said we will make it, but we, the next step.
A minute ago, we can't discuss it without a motion, put it on the floor.
Okay.
How would you like to proceed?
I, I'm going to use a parliamentary procedure we've used for 20 years. And that is that we, we discussed this. We had the presentation by staff. We asked questions. At that point, uh, it's turned over to the public for public comment. After that, we asked for a motion to, uh, to approve whatever it is. And the person who proposes gets the first comments, the second gets the second comments and everybody else follows after that. That's the procedure we've always.
My fault. I thought you were looking for a motion.
No.
They're referencing items seven and eight.
They're referencing seven and eight in the staff report.
Yes.
Yeah, and the result.
I printed it out today. There are no items seven and eight on here.
It's item one in, in, on item one.
Seven and eight. So that topic you just brought up has not been published to the public.
It's within the staff report of item one.
It's not. Here goes. So how can the public respond to something if we don't know what's happening? I, there is no item on here about four year terms.
Okay.
I can try to help. Being the guy who always is like the last to figure it out. Teresa, the language is in the HD, is in the PDF version. It's not in the HTML version on the town website. And it was not in the paper version in the binders, but it's available as a PDF, full explanation.
I'll pull both of them. It's not in either of them. I have a copy here and the copy that's on, that's there. It's not in the, I was at fault. But shouldn't it be on the agenda item itself?
Tell us exactly where it is, uh, on page 58. But it's not in these packets here?
All that's on here is a motion to approve. The only way you could get the rest of the information would be to click on something. So that seems a little disruptive.
Okay, I'm going to ask, okay, I'm going to ask you to wait, wait to be recognized before you talk, please.
Action item.
So on, I, on, on my copy, page 59, we have item number three, council approval to put before the voters. Did that go out to the public? It is online. We have it before us here. Is anything else other than this that people, that we have that everybody doesn't have? Right. We, we see that and the actual items on page 59, item number three, bullet three. And is that all the information that we have? Is this, is what's here? And then the resolution on page, okay, say sixty.
Mayor, I see it mentioned on 58, 59 and 60.
What we're requesting be approved is just the resolution, that language that is on page 59, the item or, yeah, the points three and four. Those can be removed. Those would be coming forward. Any language, any changes, um, specifically, specifically would come forward in an ordinance. And it would be two individual ordinances, one regarding the mayor term item, one regarding the council member item. That would come forward if you direct me to do so, it would come forward in the next couple of meetings.
So, so, um, i- if we, if we approve this, it would be a notice to the county for the election. And it would be, and there are two issues, the mayor terms and the council terms. And it would be instructions to you to start preparing the code that would have to be approved by council and then submitted to the voters for a voting approval.
Yes.
Does that explain the process?
Yes.
Okay. So everything is here that is meant to be here and the public has seen this.
Yes. It's, it's online.
Okay.
It has been available to the public. Yes. It has been available to the public, but it's not fully explained in the agenda item that some people may have. The explanation is within the packet and it's a public document.
Have, have you asked to speak, Julie?
I would like to speak on that. I asked to speak on a different item, but it says I'm supposed to, but I didn't realize it was there because all I look at is this. I don't go through all of that and even the package there.
Okay, pl- please, please grab a, a, a card and fill it out. And in the meantime, we will start taking. Well, first of all, are there any questions of Teresa? Do we all understand this? Okay, uh, then we'll go to the call to the, to the public comment on this one.
David Phelps?
David Phelps, Cave Creek resident. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Four year terms were, uh, part of our operating procedure in the town. I think initially we had staggered terms. We had three, three year and four year terms where we were having elections, um, regularly. And what we found for your terms to do was to kind of, I don't want to say instigate, but it gave the perception that the people that were upset with a decision of a body, that their remedy was recall. And so one of the things that I've seen that's been more prevalent with the two year terms is, you know, you got 18 more months to wait. Vote them out if you don't like what they've done. So I'm here to, um, support the two year terms. And I actually think that there are more than two things going on to the county. I think there's the home rule, the mayor's vote for four year terms and the council's vote for four year terms. You just asked about clarifying that with the clerk and she said it was only two items. I think there's three. And it concerns me the way it's, uh, co-mingled together that we could have 22 things. And we're just going to start writing them all up. I suggest that in the future, what we would do, one item per agenda. Don't co-mingle a bunch of things into it like you're throwing it all out there. And let them all stand so we don't spend the time and the resources on something that we don't have four votes for at the get go. She's going to go spend time on the mayor's four year election and the council's four year election and the home rule thing. And what if there isn't four votes tonight for one of those three things? That's all I got to say on that. Thanks.
Just to be clear, we're not voting on four and two year terms. We're, we're voting on referring it to the electorate. For a vote, if, if it goes into effect, it will be voted on by all the people.
I understand that, but you could also kill it tonight. You could, you could just say, we're not going that direction. We don't believe as a body that we want to spend your resources in bringing us back in ordinance, publishing the ordinance and having this debate go on, on this issue. So these are somewhat discretionary in a way that you can either take it forward tonight or you can kill it tonight.
Exactly.
All right. Thanks.
Julie Goldhammer?
Hi, Mayor Morris and, uh, council members. I'm sorry. I was speaking out of turn. I wanted to speak on that, but I honestly couldn't find it and I'm pretty good about doing that. So I am, um, like David Phelps is, I am against it. And the reason I want to give is a couple of logical things. This is obviously a volunteer position. And if y'all are doing a great job, we're going to vote you in again. So there shouldn't be any concerns that, uh, you have to go in for four years. I think it's always a good idea to get some fresh, um, fresh eyes on, on things that are happening in town. So there isn't a feeling that, A, it's just the, the cronyism or the good old boys. I'll tell you, I've been out for the last couple of weekends, uh, gaining signatures because I am trying to get on the ballot myself. And it has been an eye opening experience. There have been some really nice things said about some of the folks that are on the council. And then there's some things, because you know, this is a democratic process where people aren't so happy with some folks that have been out there for a very long time. So I think it's just good if the, um, if we can do it at the legislative, um, you know, the federal, uh, level. If we can have two year terms for our state representatives and for our legislative representatives with the federal government. And they're actually paid. I see no reason why you need to extend to four years. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no, no additional speakers for this item.
Hey.
Oh.
I did forget one thing. I had time. Please.
I will indulge you this time.
All right. All right. So if we're going to put four year terms on the ballot, we need to make sure we have term limits to go with it. Thank you.
You hear the comments?
Now, no additional people.
Okay. Then we're at the point now, we're looking for a motion. And since this was my idea to put it on here, I will make the motion. I move to, um, motion to approve resolution number R 2024 dash zero two, a resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Miracopa County, Arizona, calling the 2024 primary and general election and authorizing the town clerk to conduct the August 6th, 2024 primary election and November 5th, 2024 general election pursuant to ARS 16 dash two zero four, uh, parent E.
Second.
So I make a motion to amend. I make a motion to amend that we remove the, the four year term, uh, portion in the guidance to the staff. The Continental Congress spent, uh, spent almost six months.
We're looking for a second before we start discussion. Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. You had, you had a motion, Dusty, so go ahead.
The Continental Congress spent about six months arguing about how long that people should serve. And initially our Continental Congress was, was, uh, not paid. They were all paying out of their own pocket. Uh, they thought that to remain close to the people, that it should be minimal term limits on the one side, yet on the senate side, they added, uh, they wanted to make sure that there was some suitability in the government because the senate, senate was originally intended to represent the states. But if our town council is to represent our citizens, we should be treated kind of like the legislature. And I think that the town staff and others represent the interests of the good governance of the town and therefore they are hired by us or the, the town manager is who hires the subordinates. And I think that's a pretty good system. And I, I kind of like the two, two year terms. I think that's kind of a smart way to do it. And my understanding is this has been on the ballot before and it's been shot down before. So that's all I've got.
Mr. Mayor, I feel like Marty McFly. There's no delirium.
Mr. Mayor, I feel like Marty McFly, there's no delirium out front, but this is totally Back to the Future, even before Kerry, in the early nineties, we had four-year terms, and they were staggered. And we didn't elect the mayor, the public didn't, the council chose the mayor. And I was very young, my hair was black, I got on the council, I got on the planning and zoning commission first, and then the council, and there was a mail-oriented assertive behind closed doors on a Saturday morning discussion, which involves literal shoving, which eventually led to the selection of Dick Bartholomew as our mayor, but there were two other gentlemen who wanted it at the time, and it was avoided. I thought, wow, is this really how this works? So, they finally decided in the council chambers on a Saturday, it took about an hour, it took a lot of red faces, who the mayor was gonna be. And one of the first things that council did was actually, by the way, I'm gonna lobby you, Ernie, before this is over, this discussion, because you are the poster boy for two-year terms, you and Mr. McGuire, so, I'm looking for your help here at some point. Right after that, the council moved to change the zoning of the community to where it was greenfall, to leave it intact, but in the larger parcels, make five acres own for residential. So, it was different times, it was time, it was a formula period of early Cave Creek. We had Mayor Davis and another mayor before her. But when I got on the council, we talked amongst ourselves, and I said, why don't we have the public choose the mayor? If you want true representation, this is a ridiculous situation. In fact, we probably should have the vice chair chosen that way as well, or that's been suggested that the highest vote counter could become the vice chair as well. But, we, this, this, this process has been tried back and forth, and let me just tell you, it's a kind of a parallel discussion here. With this new system, where we can electronically get people to support our nominating petitions, I mean, it's a blessing, God knows, to not have to go out in high temperatures and pump it up and down the street, and anybody with good email list can get their petition signed easily. But it's kind of one more step back from the public, it's one more door not knocked on, and one more person that you don't talk to in front of the library, one less handshake. If you go to the state legislature today to testify, you don't get three minutes here with a traffic light, you get one minute. So, everything that government seems to do is to distance the people that put us here from being in our space, so to speak. I, we, we brush our teeth every day, we change our air filters and our water filters, why would we think that changing our elected officials every four years would be an improvement? And I guess, let me get to, right to the point, the one thing we learned in early Cave Creek is that the reason people prefer staggered terms is it's easier to slide a slate onto a council of three people or four people in control of the decision-making apparatus of the council. When all seven have to stand up at the same time and say, I'd like to run, and last time we got fourteen, there were two choices for every vacant seat, this time, I don't know what the number is yet. But I just would remind us all of that, in a small community, we don't have to be like the big cities, in that there is wisdom that is absorbed by speaking to people. Many, I, I admit, many times they're not informed, or they're inflammatory before they're informed, but this is not a pension system, we're not here to collect a pension after we're done, we're here to try to make a difference with our own passions and our own visions, to work collaboratively with, with one another. I, I just don't see a benefit to the community for this. Now, the good news is, if there's four votes tonight, and Ernie, I'm gonna work in a second, if there is four votes tonight, one just feels to look at what just happened in Carefree. Eighty percent said no on property tax, eighty percent. Now, this has been rejected once before, not more than ten years ago or so. So, it hasn't really been shown to be conceptually an idea which advantages the town, the resident, the voters, the process, that I can see, that I can determine, and it's just one more slipping away from having to, I mean, in the early days of Cave Creek, as I've told you guys, they, they had block parties out here on the front porch of the building across the way, Martha Arnold would bring food and beverage, and they'd sit out there and talk about us while we were inside deciding. You probably have heard those stories, or remember, it was even more robust in those days, with your neighbor and his overalls kind of getting you up close and telling you what an idiot you were. There probably is an advantage in that, I mean, many times, of course, then and now, maybe I am an idiot, but at least I make a sincere attempt to try to, as best we can, and we have to follow the law. But lifestyle protection, we're here for one reason, and that's lifestyle protection within the framework of the state constitution and the laws, and the best advice of staff and, and the attorneys. So, when you have staff like Kerry, who's been here for a generation, that is your institutional continuity, but then you also have elected officials who have gone out on their own every two years and identified their willingness to run again, and they are institutions because of their connection to the voters. The last thing I would say is, do you think people are as likely to volunteer for a four-year term as they would be a two-year term? I mean, I'd only apply it to myself, I'd go, I don't know, four years? You've all heard my story too many times before, that when I started down here, I had a kid, and she was under the table, the staff table, the crayon and coloring book for all the years I served on council. So, four years might be too much to ask people to come in and do. So, anyway, I think two years works, we've got two men here, two members of the council approved that accountability to the public equals return to office, and if it does go forward with four votes, I don't think the public's gonna support it, because there have been two attempts to try to reverse this before, and it seems to be working, and in a small town, we need to be talking more to the community, not less, and, I mean, it, it does suck, pardon the vernacular, to do the electoral process, you gotta do a lot of stuff. I mean, rejection is one thing when you're up here, but when there's a ring doorbell in a house, and they think you're a religious salesperson, Tom knows this, you're often misunderstood as to why you're on somebody's private property at nine o'clock in the morning, trying to be cheerful, hey, I'm your friend, I'm here to help, I'm from the government. Yeah, that goes over really well, so, I mean, I think it's a worthy debate, there's pros and cons, but I think the way this is structured this evening, I don't think it's in tune with the public of this community, who really care about one thing, whether you've been here a year, or twenty, or forty, or many years, it's what can we legally and responsibly and ethically do for lifestyle preservation? We're all here for that reason, and I like the idea, that if I were to make a midterm adjustment to two years, I could vote for somebody, or not vote for somebody, or whatever, but truly, when you only have three seats open, you're not getting ten applicants, you're getting three, and those are decided in, you know, comfortable settings outside of sunlight, and then you may get one or two more who have some grievances who try to run against. I, I think true turnover should be seven people standing at one time, that's just me. I often have to what it's worth.
Okay, thank you, other, other comments? Councilmember Bunch?
I, I would hope that the community has matured a lot since, since those days that we had the, the knockdown dragouts and the, and that type thing. You know, sitting here, and you pointing me out, and I, I've been through nine elections, you know, every, every two years, and, and it is, it is a chore to get those signatures to, to, while it may be easier now, it is a chore to campaign, and it takes a lot more of your time. I love serving, I hate campaigning, it's always been a real pain in the, you know, what, to do that. From my perspective, this is the pure democratic process, sending this to the voters to allow them to decide whether or not we do staggered terms or not, of four years, and I think I will end up voting, voting no on the, on the amendment here, or the, just because I think we need to give them the chance to make that decision, because there's pros and cons for both sides.
I think this is a, a good discussion, and it's a discussion we should be having. I'm afraid that I, I don't want to get to a point that we have made a decision here to simply table this. I would like to see us move on, make this a part of discussion with the community. There are advantages of having people on the council who have been on there for a couple of years, have worked with staff, know how it works, they can be voted off, and then when new people come on, there are always some people on there that have a greater understanding. When you come on council, you really don't know how it works, and it takes a while to get up to speed. Maybe it even takes two years to get up to speed, but if there are people on the council who have been there for a while, and can help you understand the process, I think it's very helpful. I also agree with Ernie, going around and getting all these signatures, you know, equal is a great system, but I'm finding it really doesn't help very much, it's still taking a lot of time to get those signatures. Now, we should be going out in front of the public, Tom, you're, you're correct about that, but how often do we need to go out and spend, I'm figuring it's about twenty hours, if I go door-to-door, to get that, that number of signatures? It really does take a lot of time, but I think there, there's a mix, you know, in the, we know that in the Congress, in the House of Representatives, they go two years, in the senate, they go six years, and this seems like a good compromise between both of those.
I was going to say that I could support either action, either two years or four years. I'd agree that I think that the public should decide. I do take some issue, Tom, with using the analogy of Carefree's vote against the property tax on this issue, because actually, Carefree voted in favor of four-year staggered terms. They do have term limits, which I would have liked to have seen in this, I support term limits. I think eight years, two four-year terms is, is definitely something doable for most candidates. Eight years should be sufficient, so, but we didn't include that. So, I could go either way, and let's just see how this turns out.
Councilor Elkma, I've forgotten about you, I'm sorry.
Well, don't, well, Mayor Bob, don't forget about me. So, I, I love the conversation, and that was the whole point of bringing it up, is that there are different points of view here, and, and what's important to me is that we do this from, how can I say this, from a, a zero point. In other words, the language that we're looking at here, in the, apparently, it's, it's not, you know, on this part of the agenda, but it was somewhere else in the agenda, in the supporting material. The language sets a stage, it doesn't have a clean start. It's about four years, it's about this, it's about that, and who gets to do what. So, I have two things to say about that. One is, people who pulled packets, right now, those of us who did, didn't sign up for the possibility of a four-year term, I'm just saying that, and it's, you know, now it's in the air. And then the other piece is, I, I just really believe that this is something that should stand on its own as a public discussion, and not be intermingled in the form of a written resolution that sort of pre-describes what we have in mind. The public is the one, are the people who care about this, we do too, because we get to do, we have the privilege to do and the work, but the public really needs to define how long we're in the chair, and, and I guess that's, that's all I need to say about it. I appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, well, I, I'm the one that's behind this, I, I, I wanted this put on here, and, and I have some reasons for that. One is, the public will decide, this is nothing more than letting the public decide what we're going to do. So, the people on the dais don't decide, it's the other forty-two hundred, or how many voters we have now, it's their decision, not ours, after a full thorough discussion, campaign, information, we'll have a chance to craft the code, put things in, put things out, limits, no limits, all these things will be determined in the future. All it is, is doing is really saying, is this worth putting the effort in to do all this work, to notify the county? That's, that's the real fuse behind this, because there are limits on, on when you can notify, and the second thing is, is to tell staff to put the time in to do this. I don't think our government has been that good, frankly, and I'm sitting here today because I got involved, because I thought the, the town government was doing a terrible job. I'll tell you that flat out, in my ten years here, we have come from a very poor situation, and we are on the cusp of straightening out a lot of things that need to be straightened out. We deal with these problems every single day, the contracts that were done in the past, I could name off, I'm, one of these days, I'm gonna sit down and put down a hundred things that, that have been done during my ten years on the water committee first, and then on council, and now as mayor. So, I just, I don't think there is, and, a case to be made, that our government is so good that it can't be done better. We're running all the time, we were put into office last December, and here it is, January, thirteen months, and we're back to running again. It takes a lot of time to develop your, your platform, to meet with people, to go out and get the signatures, that's probably the most onerous thing, I agree with Ernie and others, that's, we're in the midst of that right now. It takes a lot of time, and every one of us is a volunteer, there's zero pay for this. We're doing this because of our love for the community, and a desire to do something good for the community. Experience is a critical thing, I think a lot of those errors that were made in years past, and people in this audience probably don't know them, I got a list, probably a hundred items long of things that, that should not have gotten done the way they were done, but having experience on council is critical, and if we go to staggered terms, now, we always have a group of council people who have been there for at least two years, and it does take a year or two to get it, you can see that tonight's confusion over the process that we use to run these meetings, and have been using, it takes a while to get all this parliamentary stuff down, and my colleague to my right nudges me quite often when I make a mistake with some kind of procedure. And Carefree, just put it in, Carefree lost their, their fire election eighty-twenty, but they passed the staggered terms as the vice mayor just, just told us here. So, since this is a referral, only a referral to the voters, I'm obviously gonna support it, because I think, I think the town will be better off for it. Any arguments that we're not going to thoroughly discuss this, that no one's gonna know what's going on and all, is completely, totally bogus. We're gonna have all the information out there, we're gonna discuss it thoroughly. When these come back to council, we'll have all the language, we can put things in, we can take things out, and everybody will be informed about it, they'll have a chance to read it, and to weigh in on what they think ought to be done, and then they can vote on it, that, that's all this is. It's pure democracy, at least in the, in our little part of the world, and we get a referendum as to how we want the town to run, and I'm gonna make the case that we're gonna have better town government, and I have spent ten years of my life working on exactly that, and I think it could be done better. I don't want to make those same mistakes again, and I'm not gonna be around forever, so I'd like to leave behind a government that can be responsive and be effective, and the town council is where the buck stops, so, that's my opinion, and I guess I was the last one, so we're ready for a vote, let's take a roll call on this.
We have the amendment.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay, yep, yep, and I want to clarify, so the amendment, Dusty, if I can help you out, was you want to take out the whereas's on the bottom of page sixty, whereas, an item will be placed before voters for consideration of changing the term of office mayor from two to four, that would be removed?
Yes.
The second whereas would be removed, where we're taking the council members from two to four.
Home rule should stay.
And, and everything else on here stays as is?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Right.
Okay, so that's what we'll be voting on then. Yes, sir.
Section two, if you're gonna delete the, the second to the last, and the last whereas is dealing with the mayor's term and the councilor's term, leaving expenditure limit, you have to go to section two, there's a plural there about the proposed items, that contemplated, you would authorize three items to be going to the, to the electors, and so, you would need the, the proposed item, which is gonna be, if you delete those two, would be the expenditure limit.
Directly to where that is.
Section two, second line, drop the S on items.
Okay. Councilman Rhodes, does that, that work?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll drop that, so we have those three changes? And anything else? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ockerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bunch?
No.
Councilmember Elkma?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
No.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Yes.
Council, sorry, Vice Mayor Ray?
No.
Mayor Morris?
No, so the motion fails four-three, and we are back to a motion that I made to, to pass resolution R twenty-two-four-zero-two. The motion's been made, and we are at the point of comments, I made the mo, who seconded that motion? It's been so long.
I think I, I did, yes.
Okay, okay, so we'll, I think I've said everything I need to say about it.
And I will just reinforce what you said. This should be a vote of the people. This is democracy in action, and what more can we ask?
Other comments?
Mayor, I hope you'd admit that it's been better the last seven years.
I was, I was on a roll. I didn't know what I was saying.
I, I think this is a good discussion, and I, I would like to move forward with this as a discussion with the community. There's a lot to look at here. There's a lot to absorb, and I'm pleased that it's coming forward to us so that we can bring it out to the community. That's where it really belongs.
I just have one question. Sorry, we speak the laboring. So when we vote now, it's voting for the original language?
Yes, original language. Original language in the, roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor, before you vote, if I could just point out the comment you made and the Vice Mayor made about referring this to the voters. In Arizona statutes, there's very few items that you're allowed to duck and send it to the voters. This is one of them, because the legislature wants you to have the opportunity to ask your constituents which, what, what they want, what they would like you to do. So you are actually taking advantage of an opportunity in the statute. The reason the clerk wrote this the way she did is that you need to give her guidance as to what will be in the ordinance when we come back to you. So you send it to the, to the people. That's why you have the complicated paragraph on the top of page sixty-one. So she knows, and I know, what you want in the ordinance that you then will come back to you to propose. Because again, you're not allowed to refer things to the voters without statutory authority. They're the only ones who can refer. This is one of the few examples. And so that's why your comment about turning to the public is apt, because the statute allows you to do that.
Point of information. Let's say we pass this. It goes, we, we have the ordinance, and the ordinance doesn't pass. Does that affect this in any way?
No.
Because we've said multiple items.
Councilman, what you're saying is, so you, you asked the clerk to come back with, in effect, three documents, three approvals. One for expenditure limit, one for the two terms. And your question is, do you have, notwithstanding this vote tonight, you have the power to, in effect, elect not to send it to the voters? Yes, you have that power by disapproving the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Mayor, Mr. Sims, so are you suggesting by your comments that we need to, need to discuss if we want term limits included in this at this point in time before it comes forward, or?
You, you have, that ain't a legal call. It's your call. You, if you, if, if, you need to add another amendment to it. Or alternatively, when we come back, when we bring back the ordinance, you could say, you could at that meeting, and we, maybe we could bring back language for term limits if you wish to do it. You have the right to do it now, or you can do it then?
At this point, we could direct staff to include that in the
You could.
In the, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's easier to include it and cut it than it is to try to craft it in the, in the middle of a council meeting. So we just include it, and then we'll have motions whether people want term, want the term limits or not.
Yeah, that was a clarification.
So let me ask, are we having an amendment to an amendment? Are, are you directing us, you're approving this resolution, but you're directing staff to bring back an ordinance that includes term limits as well, though? Is that your direction?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want an alternative or just term limits?
I, I say that, but we've all, we're going to vote now, so we, so I, I would say, yes, we would, we would bring this back with term limits.
And then, then we could amend it when it came forward, when we remove those, if we didn't want them, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else before we go? What time is it? Okay, so. Roll, please.
Councilmember Ockerton?
No, I don't support it. I'm sorry. I support everything else, but not terms.
Well, you could vote against that.
Next one?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, then for the good of the Bush, then I vote aye. Sorry, I need to change my vote.
Aye. Thank you. Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Elkhama?
I'm going to vote no, because I believe that we are describing a situation for the people in town who would like to describe their own situation about how long we serve and, and what that entails.
Councilmember McGuire?
I think this brings the discussion forward, yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
No.
Vice Mayor Ray?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Yes, motion passes five-two.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Would anybody like to do a wager with the three mayors, Mr. Bunch?
Maybe outside the meeting.
Three car wash. If the voters approve this for the two of you.
Illegal gambling.
Okay, we're on to item number two of, of three tonight. Council discussion approval for site plan review related to case number SPR dash twenty-three dash zero-one, Desert Hills Brewery, to allow for development on one-point-five-one acres for an eating and drinking establishment at the northeast corner of Fifty-third Street and Olson Road, presented by the Development Services Department.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to turn it over to Senior Planner Stephen Peralis, who has been working with this applicant all the way back to the pre-application stage of this proposal. Mr. Peralis?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council?
I have a, I have a procedural question, point of information. When we voted last early February, we said the Planning Commission was supposed to take, we, we left site review at the, at the Planning Commission so that they could get input from the voters. In that last Planning Commission, they did not, Mr. Brechner did not allow input from the voters. I'd like this to be removed, sent back to the Planning Commission, and get them to talk to the community and get the community input before we go forward.
So, so he
He said it was pro forma, and he could not take any questions, and he could not have any discussion of it. I'd like it to go back to the Planning Commission and done, be done properly.
Luke, how, how does that affect other people? What are the total effects of, of doing that?
The, the site plan review process does not require, the state law does not require public comment. The zoning ordinance does not require public comment for, for site plan review. The chairman announced at the meeting that there would be no public comment on a site plan, that there would be Planning Commission questions of staff and the applicant, and then a motion and a, and a vote on the matter.
Then we need to change our ordinance, but this is unfair to that community. They had a bunch of questions. By and large, I've talked to several people over there. They're in favor of this, but they have some questions. I've got a list of ten of them that I've, that different people have provided. So I would like them to have the opportunity to talk directly with the Planning Commission and with the applicant going through the building services, if that's required, before we do this. I think it's a procedural foul, and I think it runs afoul of what we all voted on unanimously to, to send it back to the Planning Commission.
I, I do not recall what that vote.
I don't recall that.
Because we had the testimony from Luke and from Chairman Brechner from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and there was discussion. And people were generally, some were uncomfortable with not having the public having its ability to provide input at that stage. And I know Mr. Brechner the other evening said, well, most cities, well, it's not administrative, not in Cape Creek.
Is your microphone on?
It's not really administrative in Cape Creek, because this came before us fairly recently, four or five months ago. And there was divided opinion up here, but I think the general consensus, and there was a vote, was that in fact, this would not be unilaterally given to staff, that in fact, it would still come before the planning and zoning publicly, and then would be sent to the council. So it's concerning that this was decided by this group, and I think cooperatively and collaboratively. And the chair began the meeting with comments, and, and it's been comments in the press and so forth. These are just things we don't need to be defending and apologizing for. The council deliberated and said that this process would be in public, and it would not be relegated only to the staff. I can't imagine the staff wanting to be the decider when you've got local neighborhood opposition, which may be justified or not justified. And that's why the council said to PNC, do your job.
I want to clarify, it wasn't, it isn't necessarily neighborhood opposition. They had a bunch of questions, and they're trying to get answers to. They hadn't, you know, said, and we want to can this, what they've said is, how, how are the dumpsters going to be handled? How, what about the smells that come with brewing? How is that going to be? How are we going to limit access to Fifty-third Street? It's a dirt road. There's lots of kids that play on that road. There's lots of horses that ride down that road. I mean, just simple kind of questions that could have been handled at the Planning Commission, and they weren't, because nobody was allowed to speak. And the whole purpose that we sent this to the Planning Commission and said, hey, you guys need to, you guys need to handle this, is because they have no other place to come, unless it's, we're going to get a crowd of people coming in and yelling at us, because the Planning Commission didn't take the time to listen to them.
For the audience, this is the crux of the issue. We had this one before, on site plans, neither the Planning Commission nor the council has the ability to change a site plan. We don't, we don't have any approval authorities. Is that, is that, I'm saying that correctly, Luke?
At the risk of being slapped by the town attorney, that is correct, Mr. Mayor.
He's going to slap here.
No, here's the issue. You're right. You have very limited discretion. If staff brings you an administrative action that meets all the requirements, you have to approve. But you have the right to say, were the requirements satisfied? I remember when we discussed this, many jurisdictions leave it to the zoning administrator, and you all decided not to do that. And so you all decided to leave it with the, with the commission. They've now, I was not involved in this decision. They've now decided to, in effect, if you look on page seventy-six, that, that is the language that I think you're referring to. And, and they're, they then now are saying, we'll do it, but then the, the public input's right here. But if you, you are the elected officials. If you wish the public input to be at the commission level, you could directly do that. But right now, this is an administrative decision, and it looks right. You have very limited discretion. That's why we, the site plan, they're, they're spelled out in your code. Your, the property owners come and they look at the requirements. If they fill the requirements, they expect it to get approved. And if you don't, you'll probably get sued and lose. So that's why Luke says you don't have discretion, but you do have discretion to make sure, for example, if traffic, if there was a current traffic study or a relevant traffic study, or if indeed there was a stamp engineer on drainage, to just make sure all the requirement. And if you look, is it Steven? Look on page. Yeah, the criteria. It's on pages eighty-nine, eighty-nine and ninety and nine, nine oh, ninety-one. This is how the system is supposed to work. Property owners look at the requirements, they get with staff, they show staff they qualify, they satisfy. In some jurisdictions, staff makes the decision. You, as a government, a public body, did not want staff to make the decision. You wanted to leave it at the commission. The commission has made a decision, and, and the chair has the right to make that decision as to how they make decisions. You may disagree with the chair's view, but he has the right to make that decision, because the public isn't puzzled. They can speak here. You, you as a body have to decide if it's not going to be the zoning administrator, and some governments do. And if you're going to leave it to the commission for a recommendation to you, because they can't make a final decision. If you're going to tell them you want them to have public comment, you can tell them that. But right now, you didn't tell them that, so they chose not to, knowing the public comment would be here.
I agree with Councilmember Rhodes. I believe that public comment is essential, and that's the first step in, at the Planning Commission level. And that's where our public is most interested in the process, and that's the appropriate place for them to speak.
And a lot of the things that, that I've heard from folks in that neighborhood, they're not necessarily opposed to it. They just want some clarification. And of course, if you can't ask questions on how this is going to work or how that's going to work, what are they supposed to say? Well, thank you, sir, you know, bend over, please, may I have another one, sir? I mean, that's kind of ridiculous. We voted for the Planning Commission to retain this. The Planning Commission should be listening to the people. They should be allowing the public to speak. Then it should come to the council, and if there's still a disagreement, we should have the opportunity to hear that. And yes, you're right, there might not be anything we can do about it, but you know, part of our job is to listen to what the public tells us. Just saying.
But I think I'm not, to defend the commission, I'm, I'm not sure you hold them, that they had to hold it to the public comment.
I, I don't recall telling them that, and I don't recall, we didn't vote on it, I'm sure of that.
Mister?
We, we voted to, to continue public, option of public comment, but.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Rhodes, the, the opportunity to ask questions of a case pending are broad and varied. We send out letters, we post the case online and advertise it in the newspaper. The applicant posts signage. All of it has staff's contact information on that. If there are specific questions about a pending case, there's ample opportunity to contact both the applicant and staff that are processing the case.
I'll politely disagree with that.
I would too, and I think the issue this evening involving Morningstar is proof of that. Everything is found out after the fact and usually before it's, or after it's.
When was it published? When was it sent to the neighbors who were affected? When are all these things? Because those are things that you're supposed to be doing, or the Planning Commission is. One of the two of you is responsible.
It's staff, and it's outlined in the zoning ordinance.
Did you send out letters to all the affected parties in that neighborhood?
Yes, sir.
You did. Do we have anybody from Area eighteen here? Yes. Did you get them? You got one?
That's correct. It's a, it's a five-hundred-foot distance.
Let's, let's, let's address the council, please. So we have public comments? Yeah. When public comment comes, we'll get, we'll get the, the information here. So so what steps did you take, enumerate? You sent letters out?
That's correct.
You published in the paper?
Yes, sir.
Continue, what else?
A sign was posted on the property, and the meeting and case material was online as well.
Councilmember Rhodes, are you saying that didn't happen?
Were they given an opportunity to speak?
But are you saying that he, that they didn't do what they just said?
Well, we obviously had some people who didn't get that, Mayor Morris.
But there is no positive way of making sure that somebody opens their mail or reads the paper. I, all I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to get we have a difference of fact here, and it's, it's cast that they didn't do something they said they did. I, I, I don't, from what I'm saying, they, they say that they did that, and they followed the, the rules that we have, which are in the town code. Are you disputing that?
I don't know all of the people who got or didn't get the mailer.
The key there is he did say there is a distance away from the property that, that is notified.
Five hundred feet, Mayor.
And that's, that's an area that's lightly populated, so five hundred feet won't be a lot of houses.
I still believe that it's very important for the public to be able to express their opinion. And I don't understand why it's just not a part of every Plan Commission meeting, whether or not we have to or we don't. It's up to us to do the right thing, and that's to provide an option and, for the public to come and give their opinion and for us to respond to their questions. It may take longer. It may, you know, it may not even be necessary, because people are in favor of it. But we should give them the opportunity to present.
Well, I'm, I'm seeing two issues here. We have the one issue where we could tell the Planning Commission, you, we want public comment on these.
That's the one that I'm concerned.
That's a separate agenda item from what we have today.
So I, I thought it was fifteen hundred feet instead of five hundred feet, so I'll take the hit on that. I apologize, Luke. But I still have a problem with the Planning Commission not taking comments.
But it's within his discretion, and we don't agree, we're second guessing his discretion.
And I would like to change that, whatever ordinance, so that they're required.
The way to do that is to make an agenda item to tell the Planning Commission how we want them to run their business.
So I would propose that we do that, but you control the agenda, so I would ask that you put it on the agenda.
I, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
This was when we had the two items for us. One of them that we, that we rejected was actually putting site plan approvals on the, on the consent agenda.
Right.
We elected not to do that, but I believe at the same time, the mission was, the, the discussion was that, that we would then hear that, hear those, those questions. And I, I, I believe that the comments at the time, and I'd have to go back and look at the, at the minutes, but I believe the comments at the time were that, that we, if, if it was a site plan that was on an existing zoning property and met everything, that, that, that the Planning Commission didn't need to hear that. I thought that was discussions that we had at that time, and I could be mistaken, but.
That's not how I, I recall it. Of course, my memory is not that good either, but the.
We're both old.
Thank you, older brother.
Mr. Mayor, I think Ernie, Ernie, as, as I recall, but we can just look at the minutes. As I recall, the As I recall, the, the commission was suggesting that you follow the examples and Luke had done analysis of those cities that delegate these kinds of responsibilities to the zoning administrator and none of you wanted that. As I recall, the zoning administ, the, the zoning commission were saying, this is an administrative duty and we, and you should then take the input. That's how it was, as I recall, that's how it was left. And, but then, but they were still in the loop because you didn't want the zoning administrator to do it. So he, because I don't think you told them to have a, a public, an open public.
I, I don't recall it. I don't, that was not an issue.
He was, he was acting what he thought was what he was supposed to do, knowing that the public comment would be right here. But you, all of you have the right to change that view. And to say, we, we not, we don't want the zoning administrator, we want the commission and we want the commission to do it with a public, with a public. That's that, that, that could be your direction. Uh, but it's not an agenda.
That is what I would like to set on a future agenda.
Well, we, we have to get the agenda. If we're gonna tell them, then we have to direct, make a directive, an agenda item and a vote to do that. I'd just like to say that if the, uh, we're two votes and a signature away from this being completely moot, if the legislature gets their way, well, we're under fifty thousand. Let's say in Phoenix and every other town around us except Carefree, they, they're gonna do away with all this zoning stuff and hearings and it, it, it completely guts it. So if you have any influence with your state legislatures.
The league is coming on strong because as I've said to you and my, 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 every year, this is one of your, one of your best, your, your most important powers is land, land use and entitlements in your jurisdiction. And people elected you, not those guys down there or gals. And that's, that's why the league is coming on strong opposing that bill.
Yeah, and the, the developers hearing discussions like this and seeing things like this, say, I approved my case, we need to change the law and get these clowns out of it. That's, that's what's going on right now.
Well, let, let's just be clear. I understand that we don't have much opportunity to change a site plan if they, if they're, if the checks are all made by the boxes. But that doesn't preclude the fact that people who live nearby should have an opportunity to give their opinion on it. And so what is the harm in doing that? If it solves some frustration that the public doesn't have a voice in activities and actions that are taking place in their neighborhoods.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, that comment is best supported by pages eighty-nine and ninety and ninety-one. That is the way you explain to your constituents how their, how the site plan is being implemented to address their concerns. Stephen did, it talks about how they're screening orders, how they're screening utility line, how they're, if you go to those three pages, that's how the site plan process is supposed to work.
That's fine, but people would like to hear it.
Oh, no, I'm just saying, that, that is the process. If you wanna do it publicly, you can.
Yes.
And, and Mayor, Vice Mayor, I spent forty-five minutes after that meeting talking to, uh, neighboring residents.
And maybe you wouldn't have had to if there was public comment. And they could have all expressed themselves then and there, all together in front of each other. Because I'm sure not everybody was able to hear your responses. So to, to ask questions and have them answered publicly is ideal, and that is democracy.
Actually, democracy is where you get to make a choice, and this, we have no choice.
Well.
If, if, if they meet the criteria, there is nothing that we can do short of denying and then figuring out how many zeros are on the check that we have to write. The developer in this town has a history of that back, back a long time ago.
I'm not saying, I, I already clarified that we knew that we can't change site plans if they check the boxes. There's a difference between that and providing an opportunity to speak and ask questions and get answers.
Mr. Mayor, just, I promise sixty seconds. Uh, when Ian Cordwell was here, uh, he would staff. It's on. When Ian Cordwell was here, he would staff the planning and zoning commission meetings, and there were occasions where people would come in and testify and raised ideas that were acceptable to the developer. And, uh, it was actually worked out right there in the session before it came to council. They, they're usually little things cosmetic or insignificant. The community feels like it has input. It may have scored a victory on something that was important to them who are adjacent to the property. So, I mean, I know we support what the vice chair is saying, but we get a lot of benefit potentially from the participation where sometimes it's actually a teamwork between the testimony and our staff and the applicant. So.
So, uh, there, I'm looking at this and we do have, uh, is there any more questions for development services? If not, then we'll move to public comment.
We haven't heard the presentation yet.
Yeah, oh, haven't we?
Ladies and gentlemen, Stephen Proust.
I was gonna say, it's the easiest presentation I ever had. Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, uh, first off, like to welcome, uh, Town Manager Grady Miller. Um, pleasure to be working with you. So, staff is here today, present, uh, case numbers, uh, SPR twenty-three oh one Desert Hills Brewery. The applicant is Jim Loftus on behalf of Red Rock Investments. Uh, location is northeast corner of fifty-third street and Olson Road. The zoning is general commercial. The applicant is proposing an eating and drinking establishment on one point five one acres. Uh, it's in accordance to the zoning ordinance with allowable uses, uh, eating and drinking establishments are in allowed use within the general commercial zone with approval by, of site plan by town council upon recommendation of the planning commission. Bulk regulations, the zoning ordinance consists of bulk regulations that shall be adhered to for all developments such as building height, building setbacks, landscaping, parking, screening, et cetera. The applicant has demonstrated compliance with all the bulk regulations, including the following, maximum building height of twenty-five feet from natural grade to top of roof line or peak. Applicant proposes a building height less than twenty-five feet from natural grade to top of roof line. Building setbacks, the applicant is required to have a fifteen-foot front building setback. The applicant is also required to meet a twenty-five-foot building setback where adjacent to residential zone properties and a five-foot interior side setback. Applicant, applicant is compliant with the required building setbacks. The maximum lot coverage for the GC zoning, general commercial zoning district is sixty percent. The applicant is proposing six point eight percent lot coverage. Landscaping, the overall landscaping requirements were met through the tractor supply development. Uh, the landscaping disturbance requirements were met per declaration of easements and restrictive covenants per resolution R twenty fifteen dash nineteen adopted June first, two thousand fifteen. The applicant will be proposing additional landscaping and will comply with the technical design guideline number four landscaping. Required parking spaces, the applicant is required to have seventeen parking spaces. Applicant proposes twenty-two parking spaces in the parking table. Parking requirements meet the zoning ordinance requirements. Outdoor lighting, although the applicant has provided a photometric analysis which demonstrates compliance, all proposed outdoor lighting will be reviewed for compliance with the town of Cave Creek zoning ordinance at building permit and inspection stages. Signage currently the development has two existing monument signs. It is anticipated that this business will utilize the remaining tenant space of, on each of those signs. Building mounted signs shall meet the town of Cave Creek zoning requirements. Screening, the applicant is required to approve, or to provide a solid method of screening that is a minimum six feet in height where they are adjacent or butted to residential zones. The applicant is aware of this requirement. The applicant will either provide an additional course on existing wall in order to meet this requirement and adequately screen the three-foot railing on top of four-foot retaining wall where the property is adjacent to a residential zoning district. Applicant will also adequately screen trash enclosures and HVAC equipment yard units with a solid method of screening. Access, a two-way access drive will be provided along Olson Road, Olson Road along with a two-way drive access being proposed along the western portion of the development. The town engineer will further assess the proposal at the time of building permits dismissal. The planning commission action at the regular, regulatory, uh, scheduled planning commission hearing held on Thursday, January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, the planning commission by a vote of seven to zero, uh, voted to recommend approval for case SPR twenty-three dash oh one Desert Hills Brewery. Town staff has prepared a list of recommend, recommended conditions of approval for commission consider, or for council consideration condition uh, contained in exhibit E. Applicant has demonstrated compliance with general plans, zoning ordinance, technical design guideline number four landscaping. The applicant is not asking for any variances or any exceptions with this case. Staff would like to know that the town engineer reviewed the project for grading, drainage, traffic and access. Town, the town engineer did not raise any issues with the site design. Utilities director also had the opportunity to review the site plan, did not have any objections with the site design. The building official slash fire official also evaluated the site design, did not have any objections. Was being proposed conforms with the zoning ordinance, a technical design guideline number four landscaping. Site plan case does not constitute approval of required improvement plants, plans including but not limited to building construction plans, salvaging landscape plans, grading and drainage plans, et cetera. The applicant is required to apply for all necessary permits to further demonstrate compliance with the requirements of applicable codes, ordinances and guidelines of the town of Cave Creek, subject to the review of the town, uh, subject to review of town engineer, utilities director, building official and zoning staff prior to obtaining a permit to commence construction. Uh, Mr. Mayor, as all staff has to report at this time, I believe the owner is here. Not, you bring samples this time, Danny, or no? Uh, he didn't bring samples, but, but, um, any questions for staff or the owner?
Questions from council.
No, I, I've got a list of one, ten questions the neighborhood had, but since, but I, I'm not sure that, uh, we have any jurisdiction or any ability to, uh, to talk about those. I do have one question, um, the, the western exits to, the two exits, is that onto fifty-third street?
The entrances and the exits are off Olson Street. Um, the town engineer did review it and, um, they did.
So here, here's my concern. We do have a lot of little kids that play on that roadway and we do have horses that go up and down there. I've got no problem with the brewery. I've got no problem with what, uh, what he wants to do. What I do have a problem with, I don't want people who are having a couple of drinks come out onto fifty-third street, whack some little kid. That's not good for anybody. I'm sorry.
I have a request and I'm not sure if it's, um, approvable, but, uh, we do have the vice chair of the planning commission here in the audience. And I was wondering if we could get her perspective on how this meeting took place? And if you felt that the neighborhood is sufficiently, um, accepting of this site plan and, and business.
Mayor Morris, Vice Mayor Royer and members of council. My name's Cynthia Driscoll. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, my name's Cynthia Driscoll. I am vice chair of the planning commission. Uh, we don't have our minutes from that meeting yet, but the way the business was conducted uh, was at the start of the meeting, Chairman Brechner indicated that public comment was available at the beginning of the meeting. Um, I don't think there were any members of the public there to speak. Uh, the case proceeded and was discussed, and then later a member of the public asked questions and that conversation continued with Luke.
You mean after the meeting concluded?
Yes, yeah, it was not discussion directly with the commission. Um, it was an administrative choice, uh, that the chairman conducted business that way. Uh, and it was a departure from how the commission has worked in the past. Uh, so I think it was a surprise too. People may be involved that that was not an opportunity to come and ask questions about site plans the way they had been questioned in the past. Uh, additionally, I think the discussion was to look at the efficiency of the process. If the planning commission cannot make changes or amendments, uh, or really even provide additional information uh, to members of the public, then maybe that's not the best place to have it. And those questions and discussions should come to the council who has final say. So I don't know if that helps explain, but.
Were there any other public meetings, uh, that didn't involve the site plan prior to the site plan approval? With this, on this business with the public?
Not to my knowledge.
So when would there, when would there be an opportunity for neighbors to ask questions about an issue? And, and have it impact the issue?
At the town council meeting.
We don't have the opportunity to change the site plan.
Vice Mayor, members of council, as I previously stated, the advertising and notice that goes out to the immediate neighborhood has Stephen's direct contact information, the applicant's direct contact information. There is an opportunity to contact on an individual basis the staff responsible for administering the case as well as the applicant who's, who's offering this proposal.
How many houses were within five hundred feet?
I think we, uh, looks like thirty? Twenty?
I thought it was fifteen hundred.
Twenty, twenty-eight, sorry, excuse me.
So before Cynthia leaves us, your perception then of the neighborhood, are they in favor of this business?
I don't have a perception.
You don't have an understanding of that because not that many people came to the meeting.
Correct.
Or spoke. One person spoke at the top of the meeting. Okay, thank you very much, Cynthia.
Thank you.
I think I'd like to add a second agenda item if we could. I'd like to review that code somewhere along the line. We've gotta have better communication with the public and more input into that.
Okay, I would ask you to meet with staff then and, and see what, find some.
Will do.
Propose change? I guess at this point, have all the questions been answered from council?
Mayor Morris, I have one comment, um, and this.
We're not at the comment stage yet.
Okay, I apologize.
Yeah, um, so at this point, we're at public comment.
Julie Goldammer. Gonna go over like a ton of bricks. So I'm Julie Goldammer, three, four, zero, two, two, North Fifty-second Street. Mike and I and a neighbor named Scott, three of us were there at the meeting. Please go look at the, um, no offense to Ms. Driscoll, but she did not recall the meeting as I did. And I think you need to look at the recording. So, um, in this agenda that is posted from the planning, um, session here, it said on the eighteenth, sorry. After the pledge of allegiance, there are announcements. If you wish to speak to the commission, please complete a request to speak form and submit it to the clerk. It was not Teresa Rizza. There was a different woman there that night. I'm sorry, I don't know her name. She was bitch hitting. That's fine. So I submitted a form and so did the neighbor Scott before the commission. And Chairman Brechner, and this is where you're gonna wanna request it specifically in the recording. Chairman Brechner, after the niceties of them actually voting for chair and vice chair and introducing the new commissioner, um, they then, he announced and said, does anyone from the public have any comments on anything that's not on the agenda? That's what you need to listen to. I didn't stand up, nor did Scott. We were right there. We gave her our, our sheets to speak. Why would I stand up then? It's because my item was the only thing on the agenda. So, um, then he went ahead and read a little statement that said that normally this is, and I'm paraphrasing, this is an administrative process in, on other municipalities and that they are not allowed to vote against anything if the applicant is in compliance. And they proceeded to ask, and they asked the applicant to come up, Dan and his wife, they're lovely. Um, and he spoke a little bit. He talked about the business. He talked about his family. And then the commission asked questions, a lot of good questions. We were not allowed to speak and Scott went ballistic. And I went off and talked to Dan and his wife, the owners, over here. And Chairman Brechner high-tailed it out that direction because Scott was screaming at Luke and it was super uncomfortable for us and I don't think Luke should have had to deal with that. Why didn't anybody tell us we couldn't speak? Why didn't the person over there at the clerk's desk say, hey, there's two people who want to speak on this. We just had questions. I'm really in support of it. It's a lovely group. I think there's just some questions. So I wanted to go on record here exactly what happened. Please go ahead and verify that because we were there and we were there to speak and we were never told we couldn't. We were just asked if we wanted to speak on something other than agenda items. Sorry, I'm frustrated. Um, my questions right now, and I'm very supportive of these folks. I think the small business is a good thing. We can all go over there. Um, my questions are, why is there a mezzanine? Does it have to be two stories? Could it be a single story and not use up as many parking spaces? Because they have more parking spaces, twenty-two spaces versus the seventeen that are required. So I just kind of wanna understand why. Um, what is the expectation on noise levels? We asked the same question when Pet Suites went up. We were talking about decibel levels and all that. Um, we think it'll be cool. We'd love to be over at the Beer Garden. We can walk over there. We'd like to be able to have something that we can support in our neighborhood. Um, and then how do we continue to be involved citizens? As Vice Mayor Roy already asked questions, I didn't get anything. I don't think I'm five hundred feet away from that site, but I will tell you, there's a bunch of people that are Maricopa County residents that are. And, um, and one of them was Scott that came. He has a horse that he rides up and down and he was very concerned. So I was worried about the fifty-third street for the horses and the kids. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ron Sova.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers Ron Sova, Cave Creek Town Core resident. I have a question for Mr. Sims. Uh am I speaking here as a current member of the Plan Commission or can I and should I speak as a resident of the community? I just have some points to make. So Mr. Mayor, should I ask my questions as a member of the Plan Commission? I can do both, okay. I'd just like to point out that it's my understanding that if this plan or any plan that goes to staff in the planning department is requesting changes and variations. There would be a public hearing, there would be public comment. This did not ask that, they had met, this site plan met one hundred percent of all the requirements of our codes, ordinances, policies, whatever. Therefore, the Plan Commission has no authority or right to du- direct the Plan Commit, or I'm sorry, the Town Council to consider changes, adding landscaping, more parking, whatever. And I would call your attention to the fact that when you apply for a building permit, whether it's a ten million dollar house, it does not go to the residents, it doesn't go to the Plan Commission, it does as far as adhering to all the policies, the ordinance is in town. It's done administratively, so to have a site plan asking for no variations, no changes, no modifications. Uh it it's kind of senseless, it's it's it takes a lot more time of staff, the Plan Commission. Uh and I I remember talking about this uh when it was discussed last year. Uh the public comment, if the council wanted to, could invite comment when it's presented for approval as an agenda item at the council. But it's not a public hearing, but you can invite, but technically, I believe your town attorney has said if they adhere to one hundred percent of everything, you don't, you know, have to uh consider anything and they're not. Uh the only other thing I want to point out, my final comment, is that when this was discussed last year at council, one of the comments that was brought up that I think was a very valid comment is that if you invite comments from the residents in town on a site plan that you cannot change, alter or manipulate, I believe you're giving, and this was pointed out, false hope to the residents because you're asking for comments and that might be enough to convince or uh some residents that our voice was heard and changes are going to be made, that's not true. So why go through that? So obviously, if you want to change this whole system, I believe Councilman Rhodes pointed out, change the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janet Moore.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Um where do I start? There's less than two percent of commercial in the town of Cave Creek and area eighteen was put aside for commercial. Area eighteen is not a residential neighborhood, so when you ask who's in area eighteen, I'm in area eighteen, the brewery is in area eighteen. Julie is not in area eighteen, Suero West is not in area eighteen. And I think we need to differentiate it because when they cloud it all together, people get confused. Area eighteen is an area that is meant to be commercial to help pay for things. Now, I've heard a lot of talk about how things, the town has not been run right until you all got here. I just would like to point out, there's a lot of photo ops you guys are going for that are because of things that our previous mayor put into place. And I really believe that none of you would have voted for it, so because you you're against commercial, okay? But just face it. What I see going on here though, with between Rhodes and with Royer and maybe with Augerton is that there's been a discussion with the neighbors and you've decided, you don't, you don't want this being able to put things through if it's already legal with the site plan, so let's change ordinance and let's not go to the meeting and talk and let's come up here and and say all this stuff about how they didn't have a fair ti- chance to talk. When that's not true, I saw the big sign out there. But you know, it it's on the Cave Creek infamous politics and I know that they had, they have a little Facebook group that they go and talk and they plan and they plot. And and Vice Mayor is friends, her mahjong partner lives in that neighborhood. And I'm sorry, but you know, this is what's going on here and I can see it. I am for this because I don't know these people, they did not know I was going to talk. But I'm for this because nine hundred and seven people voted to have commercial in this area. And Mr. Rhodes, have you ever been on fifty-third street?
Yes, I have, I was there with uh supervisor Gates about a week ago.
Did you see children playing out there?
Yes, I did.
Oh, did you? Because I never have and I have cameras on my property and I never see children out there. I haven't seen a horse on that property since I've owned mine and I've owned mine for over a year. Now, I know Scott Weller has horses, if he lives in the house that's there, that he has a big sign on it that says "Commercial Potential" but he fights everybody else that wants "Commercial." I think he's in Cave Creek and he is in area eighteen. But I think that from what I'm seeing here, I don't like it. And it's it's the reason why congressman or the legislature has people that are trying to push things through that we're not going to like, because you guys will not listen to reasonable people that are trying to make money. And and you can all make money, they just have a dream that they want to do. And so I I hope that you that you vote for that you approve this because there's no reason for you not to if it meets the stipulations, it's not a zoning change. And if you don't, you're probably going to get sued, I would think, because why wouldn't you? I mean, there's really no reason to turn it down, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
No additional speakers for this item?
Okay, we are at the point we're ready for a motion on this one.
We want one more.
Yeah, talk first.
Bruce Arlen.
In the interest of good man.
I promise, so this is not really my fight, I don't live in the area, but I'm hearing about this in detail for the first time and it seems that everybody said they're for it, actually. And uh you know, uh it's about hearing the people, that's it. There's nothing more complicated, so the rules are, you know, these kind of rules that everybody's hiding behind. And I I know it sounds harsh, but it seems like the rules are hiding the idea that people could have a First Amendment right and you guys have, what was the word, I know, it's discretion. So uh the commission had the discretion and they chose not to, hear the people. And Councilwoman Royer is correct, the people need to be heard. So all I had to say, thank you.
And also for the record, I I do not oppose commercial development, I'm very proud of the Carefree Highway Corridor. It is what sustains this town.
That is correct.
And we give all the credit to previous councils and the White Paper Committee, which by the way, my husband was one of the leaders of, uh to identify that area for commercial development to sustain this town. So none of us are opposed to development.
The blanket statement that certain people here are against making money and having a thriving community, I think it's a false idea.
Thank you.
All right, my, just to clar- clarify the record since it was aimed at me.
Yep, yep.
I don't oppose this. I don't oppose it at all. What I'd like to see are the questions that the neighborhood provided, I'll provide them to the owner afterwards and kind of a good businessman sense, being a good neighbor, those are the people who are going to sustain his business in hard times. So I plan on giving him those and hopefully he will meet with the folks that live there so they can do that.
Janet, it, one comment really quickly because we're this is out of order.
Well, you know, you you did it over there, so you know. So I just want to state that they did have time to speak, they had everybody's number to talk to them. They could have come to this meeting tonight, there was plenty of opportunity for them to speak. I just, I just like fairness, that's all I like. And I just don't feel what, I'm not happy with what I'm seeing tonight, I'm just really not, that's my truth. People may not like me, but they, but you don't know where I'm coming, you always know where I'm coming from because I'll I'll tell you, I'm not going to do sneaky things behind people's backs, thank you.
Okay, we're ready for a motion.
I'll make the motion. Motion to approve the site plan review for case number SPR dash twenty-three dash oh one, Desert Hills Brewery, to allow for development of one point five one acres for an eating and drinking establishment at the northeast corner of fifty-third street and Olson Road.
Second.
Let Dusty have it.
Thank you.
Okay, uh made the motion, so you have the first comments.
The first comment is that we support this business, we wish you all the best. We do wish that there was a little more opportunity for the public to come and ask as a whole rather than one-on-one. But that's our bad and maybe we need to change that, it's certainly not on you. So good luck, sir, with your business, we wish you all the best.
Yeah, my my complaint has not been with the business, I I actually support this, I think it's a good idea. My complaint is, I think it's a process file, we need to fix the process and that's on us and we need to do that. So I will get with the town manager and we'll see what we can do to make this uh have the opportunity for people to comment at various times so that it doesn't come in and we pit citizen against citizen as we are so often want to do.
Councilmember Elkema, do you have a comment, we're going to recognize you first if you do.
I do have a comment and I appreciate that. Um and I'll just, I'll just kind of tag on to what uh Councilman Rhodes just spoke of. And I'm looking at our strategic plan and under the category Safe and Vibrant Community, an action item at the bottom of page eleven, it talks about reviewing chapters um in our town ordinance and codes. So here's our opportunity, let's pick this one and talk about how we're going to listen to the people we serve.
Other comments? Councilmember McGuire.
I think all of us up here truly feel that we should be listening to the public, I think the issue is, should the public be able to speak at the commission level where no changes can be required? Or should they be coming to the council when we have the final say? And I think that's probably the most more appropriate place to have it. And I think that's generally what happens in most jurisdictions. I think this is the place where it should take place. I feel badly that people did not have more opportunity to speak before the commission and that there was a misunderstanding. I really don't want to hold up this particular project because I think everybody wants it to to occur. But I think we need to look at the procedure within the planning commission and consider to what extent do we want to listen to people there. I think the process needs to be changed, but I don't want to hold up this particular project because I think everybody agrees it's an excellent project. Many of the aspects here will be dealt with by our development director and by our staff that look at the various issues such as where are you going to put your garbage? Where the traffic will go, will go, what's legal, what's not legal, uh that will all be looked at. But I think I just don't want you to be held up for a project everybody wants when the issue is maybe we just need to look at how we operate in the future.
Other comments?
Yeah, this is a prime example of why the last election I didn't run for mayor again. This country was founded on property rights. The state legislature has decided that a site plan that has no variations is just as smooth and slick as it can be and there's no comment that any of us could make, can change anything about that. I think this is more than not speaking or not letting people ask questions is actually a lack of education of the general public, which is where my frustration comes from with actually being a part of this council after nineteen years. Um that's, I love the project, thank you.
I think all the comments were right on target, everybody, it it's a process question, it's a uh uh disagreement with discretion that uh someone, another volunteer works and so uh the place to solve it is at the process level. Okay, um I think we can do this on a voice phone, let's hope. Oh, that's that's me, see, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero, we're on to item number three, council discussion approval of professional services agreement with GHD Incorporated to assist with modifications to the operating permit to the town's water treatment plant for an amount up to thirty-four thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars and zero cents. Presented by utilities director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um we're going to pull up a couple of slides, you just really quickly, um so when the town um constructed, guessing this up, uh and back in two thousand twenty, the town actually installed two membrane treatment uh um units, the pall membrane trailers at the water treatment plant, that was actually to allow us to address a treatment issue at the plant. Uh when the operational permit was issued to us, they gave us a four-year timeframe and they called it a temporary membrane integration project. So the timeframe for that permit is actually up in October of this year. Uh originally that selection uh process was, uh because originally we thought the Phoenix Interconnect project would be underway and potentially online by this time. That project has been delayed, so what we want to do is actually talk to the regulators about making the membrane units a permanent part of the the process up there. So they've been a very good helpful uh process, uh they don't treat uh all of the town's water supply, the the um the plant is permitted to treat three million gallons a day, we only have two million gallons a day of treatment uh units of the palls. While they produce the best quality water, we want to actually integrate them with the Westech, we've been operating that very successfully for over three years now. Uh so we believe um uh we can get that permit put through. Uh we've selected GHD to do the work as GHD was actually involved in the original project that allowed us to put the palls at the plant and they've actually helped those operationally, so we had some staff changeover and staffing issues at the treatment plant. So their staff do have knowledge of both uh the original construction of the pall membranes and then um also the um the operation of the plant uh with the the dual process. We have the Westech filters inside the buildings and the pall membranes and the trailers behind it. So this is going to be a two-phase approach, uh the first phase is what's a four-year right now is for the thirty-five thousand dollars, that's so they can complete what they call the approval of proposed plan. It's effectively us presenting to Maricopa County Environmental Services what we uh would like to do to make these permanent membranes inhering back from them. And then the phase two would be actually the improvement documents necessary to allow the the any modifications. We don't anticipate them asking for much, we've done a lot of improvements over the last couple of years, we've added some um uh walkway landings, we've uh consolidated some of the chemicals of the site. So we're curious to see what the the um the regulators would require of us uh to do improvements. We do have some money in the capital program if they do require improvements, so uh tonight's action is to ask that council authorize this, what we're saying is the first phase of this contract with GHD. I don't think the second phase will be that expensive, uh but it allows us to get this process going now um in in time for the permit to be uh well, the permit will expire this uh October, November, so we want to get this started now. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Questions from council. Seeing none, there is a public comment on this.
David Phelps.
There's David.
David Phelps, Cave Creek resident. Um I think we should appreciate this, we're buying time the smart way. You want to get every inch of life you can get out of the Westech filters. As we know, new filters are very, very expensive and I appreciate the planning effort and the buying of time, thank you.
Thank you.
No additional speakers?
Looking for, uh let's see, uh we're looking for motion. I will make it. Motion to approve a professional services agreement with GHD Incorporated to assist with modifications to the operating permit for the town's water treatment plant for an amount up to three four thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars.
Second.
This is financial, so we'll have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Elkema?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Augerton? Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye, motion carries seven zero, you have your money. Um that, seeing no further.
To adjourn.
No further business. Councilman Rhodes wants to adjourn, okay, you second? No votes in favor? Do you adjourn?